It's one o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and start the work session discussing the education facility master plan under policy F.A. It's annually updated for submission to the Maryland Department of Planning and the Maryland State Department of Education's Public School Construction Program. The plan includes the Washington County analysis, inventory and evaluation of existing facilities, enrollment projections, and an assessment of the Washington County public schools' facilities' needs, including a schedule of proposed large capital projects and systemic renovations. With us today to lead the discussion is Dr. Michael, Mr. Rollins, Mr. Mills, and Mr. Criswell, and it's all yours.
Thank you, President Breitman, members of the board. Dr. Wilcox, as Mrs. Breitman indicated, today we're here to review the Facilities Educational Master Plan. This document is required by the state to be submitted annually and requires your approval. We anticipate, depending upon today's discussion and direction that we receive from the board, to bring this back to you for formal action potentially on June 2nd. This is your opportunity to give us any guidance or direction, philosophical changes, facility needs, program changes that you see as far as buildings go that you want us to address prior to your adoption of the educational master plan. I think this is a little bit different than what we have in the past, but I'm gonna have each staff member participate here a little bit, kinda guide us through the book, give you very specific examples of how to read the educational master plan. It's really a document that we pull off the shelf regularly, you know, how big is the site, what's the square footage? Somebody's talking about a room they want changed, we have diagrams in there of the various buildings, so all those things are very important to us, and this is the book that our team uses regularly. The educational master plan also sets direction for the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. So this document is the planning document, the CIP is what we call the money document, and we'll be bringing that back to you for approval in September. That gets submitted to the state the first of October, and then we start through the appeal process generally in November, December, and ultimately in January before the governor, depending upon how our funding requests are approved. The other sister document to this, in addition to the CIP, is the CMP, the comprehensive document, or the maintenance document. It's a document put together by Mr. Mills. We bring that document generally to the board in October. The state requires that document as proof that we're being good stewards of their investments here in Washington County, that we're taking care of their buildings. So you have three companion documents, the educational master plan, the Capital Improvement Program, and the CMP. So today, we're here to discuss the educational master plan. The very first chapter is really an introductory chapter, and we're really gonna start our talk today with Chapter Two. It's an analysis of various communities, and Chad's gonna share a little bit about that, and specifically one community, just to give you an example of that. Chad?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Chapter Two is a requirement of the Maryland Department of Planning. In the initial phase of Chapter Two, it's basically laid out to address all the required components that the Maryland Department of Planning requires. It goes on to review the enrollment comprehensive plans, the adequate public facility ordinance, countywide developments, pupil generation rates, population distribution, and available infrastructure within the county. We gather this information by contacting the county staff, city staff, all the municipality staff, so all the information contained in this document is gathered through the work with each of the various municipalities. What we do to simplify it a little bit is we divide the county up into the seven comprehensive high school attended zones. So for example, in Chapter Two, if you would turn to page 22, we'll look at the Clear Spring High School Educational Service Area as an example. And each of the high school service areas are broken up exactly this way. We go through and we look at the, first, the middle and elementary feeder pattern. So we list all the elementary schools and middle schools that feed into each of the comprehensive high schools through their various attended zones. We go on to talk about the building and the subdivision activity that's occurring in that specific high school attended zone. If you flip the page over to page 24 and 25, you can see that we provide a map to show all of the identified building subdivision activity that is occurring within that area, and we provide a chart that explains the total possible units, the units that are in concept phase, units that have been approved and maybe are under construction, or for whatever reason, the contractor is waiting to start construction on and maybe have not applied for permit at this time. And then the associated elementary, middle schools that that development would attend. This is, this is a very helpful chart for trying to determine how much potential development and growth could occur within each of our high school service areas. It's used all year by myself and Public Pathways Incorporated and other staff. Each of the educational service areas also goes through, and they look at infrastructure, such as the water and the sewer plans, employment patterns. We go through and we look at the capacities of each school, and then one of the new components at the Maryland Department of Planning is required that any attended zone realignments that have occurred within the past year, they want identified in this document. Now, this particular document has no changes within the last year, but pending the board's decision on the upcoming attended zone realignment process, a future EFMP may indicate changes in the future, so that would be a change we could see in the future. And then finally, each educational service area gives considerations for each of the communities as we move forward in the document.
Thank you, Chad. With that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mills if he would just give us an update on facilities inventory. It's gonna be a little bit more detailed than we have in the past. Again, this is kinda helpful in this document to understand floor plans and those types of things, but also the condition of each component of the building. Mark?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. This slide represents the Washington County Public School current infrastructure. It's 47 educational facilities of nearly 3.4 million square feet on approximately 1,100 acres. This data does not include the Center for Education Services or the Transportation Center at 820 Commonwealth. The next slide is a slide that gets us data from page two of Chapter Three. What this slide represents is the industry standards for life cycle of buildings and components, and it uses the industry standard that we took, that we take the quantity of the buildings or components and compare them to the expected life cycle to develop a calculated average of replacements per year. For example, with a total of 47 educational facilities and an expected life of 50 years, we should be replacing or completely, totally renovating or modernizing about one building per year. In addition to that, another example would be the roofing systems that last approximately 20 years. With 47 roofs, we should be replacing probably 2.3 roofs per year. So if you'll turn to Chapter Three, and you'll see it's laid out in several sections. The first section on page one through 19 is basically the inventory, the background and the process that we use for rating the schools. We use a superior rating, good rating, adequate, not adequate, and poor rating. Those are compiled on a spreadsheet on page 19 and 20, which allow us to rate all 47 facilities against these, and against their systems. If you move through page 21 through 25, you'll see the 101 dot 1 form, which is required by the Interagency Committee and the Public School Construction Program. I'm sorry, switch over to the elementary school tab.
Mark, give them a page number.
It's a page 21. Right past the map. I'm sorry. The page 21 has the 101 dot 1, which is required by the Interagency Committee and the Public School Construction Program. This includes our SRC, the percentage of students that are there, the actual acreage, the age of the school, and many components that are associated with that building. These documents are included, as Dr. Michael said, we use these documents all year, and this is a vital page that we use quite a bit. If you flip over to page 22, that has our student capacity calculations, so that'll include all of our classroom, the net square footage, the types of classrooms they are, and the numbers, and that's how we come up with our attendance. On page 23, 24, and 25, 23 is the site plan of the school. It shows you where the school's laid out within its boundaries, and then 24 and 25 are actually the floor plan. This is very typical for all 47 buildings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mills. So you can see, if you have a question about a certain building, or state rate of capacity, or where location of something is in the building or property lines, this is the chapter that we go to to provide that updated information, or get updated information. I asked Mr. Rollins to share just a little bit about Chapter Four, which has a great deal to do with enrollment and enrollment projections.
Thanks, Dr. Michael. Chapter Four reintroduces the enrollment projections that were presented to the board at its March 3rd business meeting, when we had our consultant come in. They're included in this document for reference, as required by MDP, the Maryland Department of Planning. As you recall, the use of these projections for planning purposes has been approved by MDP, so what's in here is what's been approved. If you turn to page three in the chapter, there's a table, Table 4.1, which details projected full-time equivalent enrollment at the elementary, middle, and high school levels for the next seven years. It's projected, as you recall, that we're gonna have slow enrollment for the, for these years, as we look at it right now. Also on page three and continuing on is a description of how school enrollment capacities are determined and calculated, if you're curious about that. Finally, starting on page 12, you can find detailed school-by-school enrollment projections.
Hey, as the board's aware, this is an annual process. If you've been here for a number of years, you've seen this, you know, book ebb and flow as we've changed priorities and changed needs, and enrollment projections have changed, and housing needs have changed. There's a lot of reasons that this is an annual process, because there is so many moving parts. One of the things that we have, I don't know if we've been instructed to do, or we're just following this process, is certainly be as fiscally responsible as possible. One of our goals when we establish priorities for the system is to try to achieve maximum state-eligible funding. That helps lower the local cost. Now, many other counties go way beyond what the state will support. In other words, state support plus our local match, and then they match additional money, build schools in advance of even being approved for funding, build schools without any state funding at all. We're certainly not in that situation here in Washington County, but we do try to take a responsible effort with this and try to align our projects that we would receive full state funding for those projects that we're seeking state funding on.
Dr. Michael, could you just interrupt just a moment? Could you explain what that state funding percentage is for the large schools versus systemic, what we can expect?
The state goes through a process, and they review the capability or the ability of counties to pay certain percentages. There are counties that only receive a 50-50 match, even though they might be used, well, probably now required to use prevailing wage. We've been at a 60-40 match before, a 65-35 match before of eligible funding. Right now, on a state-eligible project, the project's been approved by the state, for all eligible costs, we receive $71 out of 100 from the state. $29 has to come from a local source. Now, there are pieces of that that are not state-eligible, so architect and engineering fees aren't state-eligible, furnishings and equipment aren't state-eligible, some technology components aren't state-eligible. So often on a large project, for instance, Bester, we might see that come more 60, 40, 50, 50 by the time we include all the other costs, but on eligible costs, the states participating right now, we're in a very favorable position with a 71, 29 percent split of state-eligible costs. There are few counties that actually have a higher percentage of state participation, 90, 95 percent, but they generally have very few projects that they request, and they're generally counties that are even poorer than we are. But it's, it's an excellent deal, $2 for one for eligible cost. It's a benefit that we wanna certainly maintain. That leads into this chart. We track this every year, actually, we have a little bit more complicated chart. We post kinda where that red bar is. We match kinda the first round that we received with the Board of Public Works, and then we'll go through the appeal, the IAC. We add another little color bar of how much we received out of that when Dr. Wilcox gets down in front of the governor in January, and we get another little piece of the puzzle, we add another sliver on there. But what this chart's representing right now, just with the red color, is the money that's been approved by the state over the last nine years. You can see back in 2008, we asked for 20 million. This was on the end of when we had our three elementary schools under construction at the same time, Pangborn, Rockland Woods, and Morgansville. So we had a great deal of state-eligible funding that we were eligible for, didn't know if we were gonna receive. Fortunately, through the years, and we can receive that money several years after the buildings opened, we received all the eligible funding for those three projects. But you can kinda see, whether we asked for 20 million, or 15, or 12, or nine, our placeholder right now at the state, if everything remains the same, is about 8.4 million. Sometimes we receive a little less, sometimes we receive a little bit more. Of our requests this year, I didn't put a percentage to it, but it's way up in the 90%. We're short like 90, or excuse me, $64,000. We're almost unheard of. We've, a couple times been 100% funded, but normally we're a couple dollars short, but we received all but $64,000 for requests of the state. And again, it came in almost exactly at our $8.4 million number. So we'd anticipate in the future that there would be the potential of $8.4 million on average for eligible projects that are approved by the state in the future. This is assuming the $250 million minimum placeholder is available for capital projects, and other restrictions aren't placed on that money. So in addition to be fiscally responsible, another part of this educational master plan is Chapter Five, and if you turn to Chapter, or page seven in Chapter Five, you'll see a familiar chart. This is really the outline of what we call our major projects. So these aren't systemic, they're still systemic projects or major projects, but this is kinda where we see ourselves going with building renovations or new buildings in the future. First one on the list, Jonathan Hager Elementary. You saw a couple pictures of that in the introductory slide, well underway. Contractors estimate they're like 23, 24 percent complete. You can really see the complete outline of the building, second floor deck board. They're gonna start roofing material very soon, if they haven't already started this week. That was part of the discussion last week, so under construction, gonna open late next spring, hope to start to furnish the building, and then as transitions are made with the redistributing plan, certainly we'll make that available to staff to start setting up well in preparation of the August 2016 opening. Our next project's been kinda floating on there, unidentified up until right now, high school capacity project. We've added that as the academic hub, and we currently are showing that as a planning year, construction over the next couple of years, based on the resolution from the board. Sharpsburg Elementary, we've aligned with where the county showed in the CIP that they're prepared to support. It got pushed out one year from where it was last year, mostly due to the decline in enrollment in the South County area. Had enrollment stayed at the levels we saw two or three years ago, we'd probably be ready for planning approval of Sharpsburg this year, and that was our original intention. But again, in order to receive maximum eligible state funding, we wanna align that with what they call an enrollment number that seven years after it's open, it could reach capacity, and that's how we receive maximum eligible funding for that. And then you'll see two middle school projects, our middle schools, the exception of Hicks, were all built about 40 years ago in the 70s. They're rapidly gonna become 50 years old, and we need to start doing some work with them. Both of these buildings partially are open space buildings and are desperate need of repair, deal with some of the open spaces, ADA issues, those types of things. And our last item up there on the list is elementary capacity projects, kind of undefined, could be four-pack, six-pack, eight-pack, meaning four rooms, six rooms, eight rooms addition to buildings. It could be South County Elementary, North County Elementary. It could be the need to expand for, let's say, mandatory pre-K or voluntary all-day pre-K or partial day pre-K throughout our system. So it's kind of undefined, but we've, we've kinda put a placeholder out there of the need for additional elementary capacity in the future. Just wanna make mention of our infrastructure. Mark mentioned, you know, ideally, we'd like to see buildings replaced every 50 years or modernized every 50 years. Right now, we have four buildings that are over 50 years old. Three of those will be addressed, Sharpsburg, Winter Street, Connekejig, if our plan's fulfilled. If we do this plan exactly as written right now for the next 10 years, so 10 years out from 2015, we see that that over 50-year number's gonna grow to 14, and that's assuming Winter Street's gone, Connekejig's gone, the old Sharpsburg's renovated, Springfield's renovated, and Western Heights is renovated. If any delay caused to any of those plans, that number could grow a little bit. Nine of the 20 schools that are in that 20 to 50-year range are over 40 years old, so you can start to see where we're heading with our infrastructure being 50-plus years old, and at some point, it's gonna be difficult to keep up with their replacement cycle of 50 years. With that, I'm gonna have Mr. Rollins just give you a brief overview of our systemic projects, and then we'll open the floor up to questions.
Thanks. So in FY '16, that's the current year, these four roof replacement projects have been approved by the state at, to the amount of about $3.5 million, and they require a local match of around $2 million. Of course, those numbers will change as bids come in and we see what the actual numbers are, but that's where we are right now, and that's what's, the 3.5 is what has been approved. Those projects will take place next summer, and we're in the process of hiring architects and engineers to design them.
Well, depending upon how we address that, we were able this year to take the match that we were gonna apply towards the Tech High HVAC project. We used maintenance money to match that project and purposely carried forward about a million dollars of local CIP money to contribute towards the 2 million. Our original plan was, the county had 500,000 identified in their local CIP, so we're counting on that 500, and then we were gonna work to find an additional 500 probably from maintenance money again to match the 2 million. Most recently, I believe last Tuesday, the county commissioners either didn't approve or have tabled the 500,000 for our local CIP, so that, that number will need to be addressed. And Dr. Harding, if I spoke incorrectly a couple weeks ago, and you asked me about the Tech High local match, at that point, we'd planned on using the local CIP, but we were able to work with our numbers, and we thought it was prudent to carry that forward a year, since that money doesn't go away, and use operating funds based on anticipated shortfall here.
My response to the question is there's now a $500,000 hole in our budget.
From our plan, most recently, that's correct.
Absent that money coming from our budget, projects that are allocated that goes away?
We could be at risk of that, or we'd have to delay one of the projects a year, but then that starts a domino effect, as you'll see when Mr. Rollins goes into 2017, which are the projects that we'll be requesting in our CIP upcoming. It'll start a domino effect there. If we don't have a catch-up of the local match, we're gonna start pushing out projects in the future if that occurs. And there is a time limit on when we need to spend the money, or we'll lose out on it, and it'll revert back to the state. So, just to be clear-
I'm sorry, could I add a question? I apologize. If indeed we go into Mr. Mills' maintenance allocation, 500,000 to try to make up this local funding match, I assume that comes out of, it would then put us into a problem with deferred maintenance? Would that start building up deferred maintenance? And help me remember, where are we on, as just a lump sum on deferred maintenance?
Just the deferred maintenance, as of last October, when we did the comprehensive maintenance plan, we were at 36.4 million with some, about 10 million of ADA money that we still needed to use. And you're absolutely correct, Mrs. Breitman, if we do cut into the maintenance operating budget, there are some smaller projects that will probably be put on the back burner, for instance, some flooring and painting, and any ceiling projects that we would do, all of the things that we would do with the non-state-funded projects that we do within maintenance. So basically, the operations of the building, some of those things would, would start to set back and not, not be done, and we could start seeing the deferred maintenance climb.
And when we look at your, your maintenance, comprehensive maintenance, which is the third of this trilogy here that we're working on, I, if I remember that document, everything's set in priorities, A, B, and C priorities, so then we start needing to rethink those deferred maintenance priorities.
That's, that's correct. Most likely, most of the priority three types of, of maintenance projects would be the things that we would, would keep, you know, aside and wouldn't, wouldn't complete. The priority one issues that we could result basically in a failure or a school closing or something like that, those are, those are the projects that we would most certainly try to push, yeah, we'd have to do those.
Thank you, sorry, Dr. Michael.
No, not a problem. So again, to be clear, the 2016, we only listed this for information, it's really not part of this educational master plan. These are approved projects already by the state, and were part of our educational master plan last year. So with that, Rob will pick up with what are going forward, and these 2017 projects will appear in our CIP in the fall.
So all our systemic projects are identified through both the life cycle guidelines that Mark talked about in, in Chapter Three, as well as actual review of the equipment and systems. So that if a system is, life cycle is 20 years, but it's still in good shape, we wouldn't identify it in a certain year, but Mark's men all go out and look at the systems, as well as Mark himself and me and others, and we determine what the best use of our resources is and what needs to be replaced first. Saying that, in FY '17, we have four projects identified, two HVAC replacements and two roof replacements. The state funding request, as we're looking at it now, would be about $4.5 million this fall, and the local funding request to match that would be about $2.5 million. Moving into 2018, four more projects, there'd be three HVAC replacements and one roof replacement require state funding of about $6 million and a local funding match of about $3.5 million. And finally, in 2019, we have five projects identified, three roofs, a chiller, and an HVAC replacement, and would require about $5.5 million in state money and a local match of about $3.1 million.
And with that, we'll be glad to entertain any questions or direction the board has at this time.
Okay, thank you. We can start around the room, or if anyone wants to volunteer to go first with their No questions? It's gonna be a short meeting. Mrs. Williams?
Well, the big question, I think, is what do we do about that $500,000 hole? And are we gonna be talking about that now?
Sure, you have the floor, please bring that forward. It's in the public domain, you can have that-
Consider it there.
What are your recommendations?
Well, one, one option that I heard was to try to find money in Mr. Mills's maintenance allocation, which would severely affect the deferred maintenance that we have all backed up. So I'm wondering what other possibilities there are, if we have others.
Correct me, Mr. Mills, if I'm wrong. I think that 500,000 was an additional that we were thinking about taking out of the maintenance. The 500,000, I think you're referencing to is, is, I think, a separate issue to come up to the 2 million plus that we need. So I think the first million was from where?
It's from the local CIP, from the county CIP from FY '15. So we're just gonna carry that forward, it's money that can carry forward. So we wanted to make sure we had some money in the bank towards the already-approved 3.5 of the state, so we're gonna carry that million forward, so that is county money that was allocated last year, that we're gonna carry forward to match the projects for next summer. And then, as Dr. Wilcox asked a question a few minutes ago, our original plan was to already take approximately 500,000 from- to already take approximately $500,000 from the maintenance budget to help support this $2 million match, and then we were counting on the $500,000 from the county CIP for FY '16, '17, '16, I'm sorry, to make up the difference of the $2 million. And all this assumes that these projects come in as we have estimates. These are strictly estimates right now based on square footage, current costs. They could come in lower, they could come in higher, but give or take several hundred thousand, we're probably in the ballpark.
I think one of the things that I'll be looking at as superintendent will be asking them to re-engineer some of the roofs, look if there are less costly alternatives. That makes them crazy because they typically then don't last as long, but at least they'd keep the building tight and dry, so we would look at that. The other thing we'd look at is probably pulling one or more projects off the list and just kicking the can down the road, which is not a good alternative, but, you know, you can only do what you can pay for. I think to take a full million-plus out and say that we can't paint, we can't replace whiteboards, we can't, you know, replace carpeting when the building doesn't feel right or something like that would be problematic for us. So I would not advocate that we simply reach deep into that budget. I would likely say, let's look at re-engineering the project, let's look at doing fewer projects. To the chagrin of the four people sitting opposite me, I just saw their shoulders go down, but...
Yes, so if we go that route and do fewer projects, then we will leave money on the table that would otherwise come from the state, where we would be...
In this particular instance, if we don't complete these projects in a timely manner, we'd actually be returning money that's already been approved for Washington County.
Right.
As we look forward into '17, '18, and '19, if you look at that state amount, $5 million in '19, that'd also be the time we'd be doing Sharpsburgs, we'd be requesting a couple mil, probably two or three or four million for Sharpsburg at that time. That would bring us up in that $8.4 million range. But in '18, we're only asking for 6.1, 6.2, if we stay with this plan. That's leaving, again, it's theoretical money because it's not approved, we don't know how the governor's budget's going to go and those types of things, but theoretically, Washington County's leaving $2 million at the table in '18. Next year, when we only ask for 4.5 million, we're leaving $4 million down at the state that if we had our local match, we could be picking up an additional $4 million towards projects.
Do you mind if I?
No, no, no.
I haven't looked at the county CIP in probably 30 days or so. Where do they have this local funding on their CIP?
CIP, they list as far as the funding source, they're showing about $4 million in systemic projects, but all under the state line. As you look up in the county portion of it, the last document that I saw included the $500,000 for FY '16, but then showed $0 in the out-years. Now, we've had discussions with their CIP team before, they've kind of said, ignore those numbers, we'll certainly add there as we can, but we didn't have a CIP.
This pointed zero on all the out-years?
This pointed zero for 10 years out, I believe, from what we can see.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Gessford?
Just a couple of comments here. The assessment team, who does the assessments?
You mean of our buildings?
Facilities.
The facilities.
It's under Mr. Mills there.
It would be under my department, and it's done through various sources. It's done through principal requests for any improvements to the school, it's done by work orders, if we have a constant barrage of work orders for the same type of equipment. It's done by all the mechanics and all of the folks that actually do the work, including myself. My operations manager looks at some of the building interior and exterior things when he does his annual assessment of the cleanliness of the buildings. And then the state, when they come through with the public school construction program, the superior ratings that we just had last year, that's another inspection that we have as part of that process.
The state does that?
They will do about seven or eight schools every year.
And Mark, I believe we're required to do two roof inspections every year.
We are, I'm sorry, that's correct.
Provide that information to the state.
And we do those?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
And we do semi-annual roof inspections, and when the state does their inspection, that's two of the documents they require, are the inspection reports from the semi-annual roof inspections.
Follow-up?
Yes.
And this is the statement here, I guess, under the aging infrastructure, I look at that 215, and I see that in 50 years, we have four schools, but then we are really going to be behind the eight ball in 10 years, when you look at 50. Do we have a compressed list of the schools and the age? I mean, I know we have it back in here through each individual, but is there a compress where lists all the schools and their ages?
By the age?
Yeah.
The assessment on, I'm looking at page 19 in Chapter 3, does that reflect?
It's also posted on our website, we have kind of a, we call it the Ruthie and Callahan sheet, she asks us to pull all that information together, but it lists all the schools, it lists their original construction date, lists any time they had renovations, science renovation, modernization, the acreage, if they have public water, sewer, those types of things. That information's on our website. Mrs. Brightman, you directed everybody to a page, I'm sorry.
It's page 19.
I think it's Chapter 3, Page 19, is the 31-point or whatever facility assessment, and it gives a very detailed, now whether we could just, I think it's a matter of highlighting the 14 old ones or the, by age.
Internally, we actually have some spreadsheets that we use for our own internal use that kind of list them by age. So we do have that, I mean, or we can develop that relatively easy. I mean, it's just a spreadsheet with the age, so.
But that facility assessment is a really great spreadsheet to have, it gives a lot of information. That was developed 2000, 2000, it was something that we hadn't done, and the state requested or required, and we started developing and we spread it, we added open space schools as a category, so it's been an evolving spreadsheet, it's a very, a lot of good information.
In 2009, if you look across the weight factor across the top of that spreadsheet, you'll see numbers, and those numbers are associated with the importance of the actual, for instance, a roof would be a three. So that...
I saw the grading system, I just didn't know if we had it compressed with just the age.
We can certainly get that, that's not a problem.
We're going to try to pull the fact sheet up that's up on the website, that might be a useful document, might even be something you want to kind of tuck away or bookmark.
Keep in mind, too, that the age of a school, let's take Salem Avenue as an example, it was built originally in 1951, but in 2005, it was completely renovated. So we reset the age at that school as from 2005 on, when it's completely modernized. Right, and there's some schools that are sort of tweeners, and it's, they might say they were completely modernized, but when you walk through them, they're really showing their age in a different way. So there is some subjectivity to determining what the actual age we want to call that building. But in general, if it's fully modernized, the age resets regardless of when it was originally built.
So South High, North High were reset to zero, it's already been 10 and 15 years ago that those schools were completed, but they were reset to zero when their modernization occurred. Boonsborough was reset to zero back in '75, '76, somewhere back in there, but of course, 40 years has already gone by on that time period.
Are you finished, Mr. Gessford, for this round?
Yes.
Mr. Ridenhour?
No, I think the key is, you know, just the migraine of work, it's effective age. In other words, you're not, you don't look at a 100-year-old house, you look at what has been, it's on, what has been done to that house in whatever years. For example, if you gut the inside, put new bedrooms, new baths, new kitchen, whatever the case might be, the effective age of that property goes down significantly. Doesn't go down to zero because you still have a stone foundation that's, you know, 150 years old, whatever the case might be. Point that brings it down a little bit more, and that's why this chart is, the assessment is so good. When you take a look at Cascade, how old's Cascade? You know, yet it's at 89%, I think, you know.
Richard, had it up there just 30 seconds.
Cascade, parts of it were built in 1924, the newer addition was built in '65, and in a partial renovation in '68. And we've added air conditioning there, we've put new windows in.
Air conditioning, everything else, and all of a sudden, it's...
Some improvements, the roof is going to be done next summer, hopefully.
So this is, this is, I think, I remember when a lot of this was done, started to be done, is good material and it does, is fairly accurate, I think. It's very well-conceived and helps us make, has always helped us make what I think are pretty reasonable decisions in regards to what needs to be done next. Obviously, as Mark said, I think the key elements are always, what can close down a school? Boilers, roof, you know, those are things you can't, you can't send kids there if the roof's leaking, you can't send kids there if you don't have heat.
Now, with some of our buildings without operable windows or a lot of windows, you can't even operate without air conditioning to that anymore. So pass, we could do that, go up to a point. If I could direct your attention just to the screen, Richard's pulled up, this is the document, it's up on our website, we update it every year. It's too hard to read here, but it actually lists the school, lists when it was originally built, lists renovations, it lists the acreage, again, lists whether it's on public water or sewer, lists, we even put a yes or a no for there's a potential for an addition or something like that. So it's kind of just a good summary document of capacities written on there, as far as, we update it every year with enrollment capacity, those types of things. Kind of a really good fact sheet, and to your point, Mr. Gessford, you know, how old are our buildings? If you want to look at it in one place, this document makes it pretty easy to see, original construction, when renovations.
This is on the website?
On the website, easiest place to find it is just go under Departments, Facilities, Planning, Development, and it'll be listed there. Richard's got it, shows in there right now how to find that document.
Mr. Ridenhour, any? Fisher?
I have nothing.
Harshman?
Nothing additional.
No questions? Dr. Hardings?
Thank you, I'd like to start with the Sharpsburg Elementary project. Last year, we had a long discussion about Sharpsburg, Boonsborough, when's the popular, when is the enrollment pressure going to come, on which school, and what does the phasing look like? I think the town planner was at this meeting last year from Boonsborough, so I just wanted to sort of close the loop on that so that when I'm asked the question, I'll be sure I know what to answer. The, if I understand correctly, last year, we said, we still have two more years before we have to make the decision of which school would be phased first. If this recommendation is approved, we would still have two years because you pushed it out one more year. And pushed it out one more year because the enrollment at both schools combined, or which schools go into that calculation?
Sharpsburg dropped some, but what's really been surprising to us, Boonsborough Elementary has dropped over 100 students in the last couple of years. So we're actually going to see Boonsborough, if our predictions are correct, next year. We're going to see Boonsborough for the first time to be under state-rated capacity with five portables. I come correct on that, gentlemen, five portables? Four portables. For the first time, Boonsborough Elementary will be under state-rated capacity in many, many years with four portables. And that, what we're seeing is primarily due to the low birth rate. It's really manifested itself more out in the county than it has here in the city. So that's what's caused us to push it out a year. The school itself needs to be renovated right now, but if we renovated it right now, we wouldn't receive our full participation, we'd receive full participation from the state, it just wouldn't be at the same amount that we'd receive if we wait until it could be at its full capacity.
Sharpsburg needs to be renovated.
Sharpsburg. Now, South County, if we were to build South County, you could build South County in the exact same time slot as we're showing Sharpsburg with full state funding, but that would require the closing of Sharpsburg. The other option to that would be, you could do South County, but you'd greatly reduce the amount of money that we'd get from the state, probably in the six or seven million-dollar range from the state, so probably less than half the money that we normally would receive from the state on the project. Because of seats from Sharpsburg, you've got to count that entire surrounding area, Greenbrier, Rockland Woods, Sharpsburg, Pleasant Valley, they take all those first-tier schools into consideration when we're looking at it, and all those schools have declined. With our redistricting effort, with putting some children in Greenbrier, which again is another school that kindergarten in the last two years has just plummeted, that will help support the project down there, whether it's South County or Sharpsburg, with children going to Fountain Rock, that will help with some of that surrounding first-tier schools, as well as maximize or better utilize our facilities.
So if I understand correct, the answer is that...
The answer was wrong last year, so I want to be careful.
I probably asked the question wrong. So the answer is that the enrollment has declined compared to a year ago. And as we look at that decline in enrollment, and then projecting what the enrollment will be over the next seven years, there's not sufficient student capacity for the state to fully participate in the Sharpsburg project for at least nine more years. Well, nine more years of when the project will be finished.
Seven years after the school opens, and Chad's our expert on this, seven years after the school opens.
I got it.
I got to be a capacity, or have the potential to be a capacity based on your projections. So with our decline, we have to backfill those seats before we start to gain enrollment to the point that we get our eligible funding.
And that the board, of course, next year, when we do the Educational Facilities Master Plan, and the following year, will again have the opportunity to revisit if there's an explosion of population somewhere, or all the construction that's projected behind Boonsborough that's starting, in Boonsborough that's starting, if it really takes off very quickly, we still have two more years to assess that and make a decision about where it makes sense to go first.
That's correct, with one exception. If we were to explode immediately, we're tracking what's happening in Sycamore runs right, Sycamore Run right now, more than a dozen homes have been built, but we really haven't seen any increase in our population from that area yet. But if suddenly 200 houses were built, or 100 houses were built, we probably would be eligible then to start pulling that project closer and go ahead and start sooner. The first dollars towards the project, whether it's South County or Sharpsburg, will be local dollars towards CNE fees, the architect and engineering fees, that's all in the local buying. So we'll readjust.
The answer, if I get the question, I should tell them to call Dr. Michael?
That would be fine, I'd be glad to talk to him.
I think that's what I'll do. Thank you, appreciate it.
I think we said last year, Sharpsburg's our sure bet, if things grow really slow, Sharpsburg's our sure bet, if things grow really fast, then we have a greater decision to make about Sharpsburg and South County.
I get that, and I, but when people in the community ask you, their eyes sort of glaze over when you talk about state matching and all this, and I think if I can explain it in a way that's true and that makes sense, I think that helps people understand that, yes, we're paying attention, we're watching what's happening, and we're making our decisions based on what's happening on the ground. But I think it helps if they have it explained to them in a, in a way that doesn't require that you sit in these meetings every year to understand. So that's all I'm trying to get to.
And I would just add, we need to see if this decline in enrollment is an anomaly or some sort of trend, and we're not going to know that until this time next year, the next September 30th.
We're on a three-year run right now of decline, like I said, Chad has the number on the tip of his tongue, I know it's over 100 children, I don't know if it's as many as 125, but we need to backfill those seats because those low grades of K1 and potentially K12 are going to go through Boonsborough Elementary. I think we have a very large class that's about to exit Boonsborough, I don't know if it's in fifth or fourth grade. So it's likely to have Boonsborough decline again unless we see across-the-board additional enrollment or an increase in kindergarten enrollment.
Can I take one more on the same topic?
Yes, absolutely.
Sycamore Run, I assume you're in touch with the county, what, I guess there are 12 houses that have been permitted, I don't know.
They're actually well underway. If we try to drive through that area, you know, so I was there probably about a month ago, I think I, I might have even counted about 14 homes that are actually built. Would even appear, maybe a couple of people are living in some of the homes already, some cars parked there, it appears to be furnished, whatever, but we're not seeing any change in enrollment at Boonsborough Elementary yet.
Right, and our pupil generation rate for a single-family home is, what, .4?
0.3, something like that.
Something of that sort, so.
If 100 homes are built.
You'd probably have to have 40, 50, 60 homes built before you'd start, before those statistics would start to...
Right, even with 103 or...
Be predictive statistics, not quantum statistics.
Right, even with 103 or 106, they were all built out, it'd probably take a couple years before we'd see the 40 couples, children coming out of that area, I would think.
So there at Sycamore Run, there's 28, final... So there at Sycamore Run, there's 28 final plat approvals with 13 permits issued. So the 12 number that Mr. Michael counted is probably what you see coming out of the ground, and there's another one that has a permit, the total number of units possible in that subdivision is about 104.
104?
Yes. Thank you.
And that's just the first phase?
That would be the, the entire Sycamore Run development, they're just to the south of the cemetery, is 104 units. It's Phase 1 of the entire King Road development. But, but the 104 is the entire Sycamore Run piece. Does that make sense?
It, it is, but if the builder has more sections that, or developer that can correct.
On the total King Road?
Yes.
Development, yes, he has other sections and phases that he'll be planning as, based on the economy and what he can sell.
Chad apparently is not feeling well, but Chad's in contact with the town manager down at Boonsboro, and in our projections for the Boonsboro area, we have included substantial expectations of additional buildings, of additional homes. So it's not as if we're ignoring any potential of growth there, they're already within our projections, where you see Boonsboro start coming back up, that'll be the result of those homes being built. Those homes aren't built, it could flatten us out again. So we do, we do have that built into our projections.
Looking for some other questions, concerns, guidance, direction?
What can you do with the, the projection of 2025 with all those older facilities? I mean, what, what do we, do we start working towards that goal to eliminate those numbers down, or could we just wait that it happens and then the evaluations that we do and hopefully that they stay cool and?
I, I think my, it's a great question, and I think my answer would be that this is a good conversation to have with our county commissioners at our joint meeting, the next time we're together on the second, because as you can see from the PowerPoint, if we don't have local funding, then we leave state funding on the table, and we're at a real pinch point here on how do we fund systemic projects, maintenance projects, deferred maintenance, large projects. This is a, the commissioners are certainly our partner in this capital question, and if they have zero on all these years, we need to have that discussion. So please feel free to bring that forward.
But Mr. Gessler, one of the things that we've tried to do during my tenure here is to throttle back our construction plans to live within kind of the manageable number because we did not want to put an artificial pressure on the county commissioners because we knew they were facing some tough times. We could, if, and you'd go back to the years prior to my coming, maybe the year or two right after, there were substantially more projects kind of on our horizon, if you will. For example, they had all of the five middle schools at one point that were built at about the same time in the 70s, up for systemic renovations, that would have cost 10 to 40 million dollars apiece. And there was some actual conversation about would we replace some of those middle schools rather than put 30 million dollars into an aging facility? Because for about 45 to 50 million, we could build a new one. That's a conversation I know my team would love to have and put out, but that would put some very big numbers out ahead, but it would help you as a board to begin to plan for that moment when you're going to be facing a whole bunch of schools that are past their lifestyle. I mean, we, we certainly could do that, but we've, we've really tried to throttle it back. Is that a fair assessment of where they were?
Pretty conservative.
Always wish we could do more. Yeah. If you'd like us to revisit the, for example, if you'd like us to revisit the middle school conversation, I think Mrs. Breitman's suggestion of have the conversation with the county commissioners is a good one, but we certainly would join you in that because we do know that our middle schools are aging facilities, we know that some of our high schools are in desperate need of repair, particularly some of the areas that get at a high, high usage areas, so.
But aren't they going to look at the numbers that you're, you're gauging at and your overall ratings and saying, well, they're, they're not bad? But when you walk into those schools, like, and just, for instance, the, the open schools, I mean, me, that's kind of horrible.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things where we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. I mean, if we, if we, if we don't take care of them and we let them fall apart because we don't do the things like lighting and things like that, and we let them really show their age, then we put kids really, I think, in a difficult position and teachers in a difficult position. So could we assess them more critically? Yes, we probably could, but I don't think we go in with the intention of being easy on ourselves. So, you know, my, my sense would be that we could say to Mark and his team, if a school really is, we could assign more points, for example, to the fact that it's an open school concept, if that's, if we didn't want them anymore, if, if that's what we wanted to do. We could assign more points to that, hence make it look worse in terms of the overall rating. But I, I just don't know.
Dr. Hardings?
And I think as well, it's, this is, where we are today is one snapshot, and it's a snapshot taken after we built a whole lot of schools, not a whole lot, but quite a few schools over the last decade. If you had looked at that same metric maybe 10, 15 years ago, I think it would look a whole lot different than it does now. I know when I came on the, well, a few years before I came on the board, that deferred maintenance figure that, that Mr. Mills mentioned was in the 80s?
80.
80 million something dollars? And that's just 10 years ago now. So while the challenge is substantial, and I agree it is, we've come an awfully long way from where we were 10, 15 years ago to be in a position to, to face the challenges that we now have. And I, I think the fact that we have, if you look at that list, at the ratings of all these schools, and you realize that all the ones that are going to be on that list in 2025 are, are on this list, and you see how high some of their ratings are, I think that really is a credit to Mr. Mills' team, Boyd's team, Rob's team, and the facility staff, who have done, I think, great work in making sure that we get the absolute, well, that the public gets the absolute best use out of these facilities for their investment. To me, it, it highlights all of that. And it also, to, to me, makes me think that, you know, it's, it's one thing to say, how do I want to phrase this? It's easy to say, I'm fiscally conservative, that means don't spend any money. But that's not what I think of when I think of fiscally conservative. When I think of fiscally conservative, it's not about do I spend money today, it's about, am I spending money wisely to care for the resources that are in our care? And I think anybody who owns a house knows, it might be fiscally conservative not to fix a leaky roof, but it's not going to seem fiscally conservative in six months when you've got a mold problem. So, and, and that brings us back, I think, to the question that Melissa originally asked, or Mrs. Williams originally asked, in a, in a discussion we probably have to have with the, with the commissioners, because we have not, as a system, budgeted from our operating budget, dollars to do these kinds of capital projects. Never done that, as far as I know. And now, that doesn't mean that we haven't spent funds in order to do capital projects. And in fact, recently, the commissioners requested the last, I think it was 10 years of our budget adjustments. And if you go back just since I've been on the board, 2009, 10, 11, 12 through today, through budget adjustments, we've spent almost $7.5 million of funds out of our operating budget on capital projects. So the reason that a lot of these scores are what they are is because when we've had funds that weren't being spent, and most of it was from some very mild winners, some of it was from when we got some funding for the Barbara Ingram School from the state, and we invested all of that, most of that money back into capital. But we haven't ever budgeted to provide the local match to the state for capital projects. And I'm wondering, and I hope we don't, but if the county is not willing to participate, or at least if we're not able to rely on them participating at some level, then I think that's something that we probably have to think about doing. If, if the funding's not going to come from that source, we're going to have to carve it out of our operating budget and take it from elsewhere. That would be a difficult decision to make because as much discussion as we had a couple of months ago about our budget, now imagine carving another $2 million out so we can provide the local match for state, for, for capital projects. But if not, I don't, I don't know how else we do these projects, and as I said before, I think doing the projects is important because it is our way of protecting the public's investment in their school facilities. So I think as we have that discussion with the commissioners, we're going to have to have it as a group of seven because doing these projects is important. We got a letter just a couple of months ago from Carlos Malat, who mentioned that we have crumbling infrastructure. That's not, that's not a charge I like to, to see, and if people think our infrastructure's crumbling, you know, we, we should do something about it. That's where I stand on that question, Mrs. Williams. There's probably more than you wanted to hear, but that's where I stand.
Not at all, thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Just thinking about your comments, Dr. Hardings, with regard to budgeting for capital Thinking in terms of lease payments, current and future, that we're thinking about, would that not be budgeting for capital projects in our operating? So have, haven't we done that? And aren't we considering doing that? But what, to your point, we, we need to be looking at it on a grander scale, is that?
Yes, certainly, we budget a capital lease out of our operating budget, yes, there's no, no doubt about that. And I misspoke, so thank you for.
I mean, I'm just trying, I'm trying to.
Thank you for ensuring that I'm precise, yes, you're right. We do, we, we have budgeted a capital lease from our operating budget, but we have never budgeted systemic projects, capital projects. The only capital I remember budgeting is for the capital lease, yes.
But I think, to both of your points, because you're both right, one of the things that we've tried to do with this hub project is defer or eliminate the construction of a comprehensive high school. So in essence, you could argue that we're spending operating money to get away from doing that. I think Dr. Michael's prepared a slide for me that I, I'm going to share a little bit later, where we've bought through our operating budgets over 500 seats that arguably the county should have paid, could have paid for if they were funding us with capital construction costs as we would like them to. So, I mean, I think you can make that case. Dr. Hardy, I, I hope that isn't being, it's not intended to be argumentative, it's just to say that we, we're paying for a lease for Barbara Ingram right now at almost $640,000 a year, and arguably, that is money, that's, that is money from our operating budgets, and we're hopeful to maybe do another project that's similar, to buy additional seats downtown. The alternative would be to say the kind, you know, we're not doing that anymore, but we have the need for these spaces, go spend 80 million dollars and build us a high school.
Right, and not, and I wasn't trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to understand and to, to bring clarity to, to it, and, and in my mind, it's not something that, that is desirable, that we would want to be doing this out of our operating budget, that if, if there's another means to do it.
Yeah, I think in a perfect world, we would not want to.
Right, right.
Well, and up, up to just this past year, the 2016 year, the county has provided much of that local match.
What was it?
Has provided much of that local match, either in school buildings or with systemic projects. We've had years the county supplied $4 million to systemic local match, which allowed us to ask for a substantial amount of systemic projects from the state. We had one year when we didn't have a school project going on, nine projects, nine systemic projects were approved by the state because we had that local match. So it's like a new development here in the last year or two.
Yeah, I was going to say, the la, in this last year, this is the first year that we've really been zero-funded, but we've had several years in roll where it started out that way. Thank goodness we've had Mr. Murray and Deb Murray there to kind of steer their way through that for us. But it's, it's gotten more and increasingly more and more difficult for us to know, and it's really hard to budget when you don't know what your partner's going to do. So that's why we've kind of started to go down some of the paths that we've gone. But you're absolutely right, I, I don't want to make it seem like the county has been an absent partner, but it's just become more and more difficult.
Yes, so thinking about what Dr. Hardings said, that over the past however many years, we've spent 7.5 million on capital projects, and that money would have been from the fund balance, is that correct? That when it, when it has found its way from the fund balance, or from the capital?
The board made the decision that rather than put unspent funds from one category into the fund balance, to instead put the funds into the maintenance budget.
Into the maintenance budget.
So it never ended up in the fund balance.
Okay.
We just adjusted the budget to put it in the maintenance.
To be able to do that. So, if I may, continue. So I guess where my, my thought is, if we have money currently in the fund balance, rather than see these projects not go forward, and by these projects, I'm looking at FY2016's project, projects, the roof replacements, rather than not see those go forward, and rather than see us not make use of the state funding available, would it not be prudent to spend $500,000 from that fund balance to take care of these roofs? But that's my question.
And it may be.
Certainly an option.
That, it may be an option.
Are there others that I'm not aware of?
Well, I think the first option that I would like to see is, I would like to see the county maintain their historic participation. I think that's the first option. I think a second option would be to, as I said, look at some re-engineering on projects. I think then you would come in and say, you know, what other source of funding do we have internally, and that may be fund balance that's sitting there because it's a one-time expense, absolutely. Absolutely. The balance that I have is, I have to have some fund balance, and right now, I think, when you take a look at unallocated fund balance, we're at about the $4 million range. If, you know, God forbid there was a delay in state aid payments or something like that to us, I could make one payroll with that, that's it. So I mean, I, I really do want to be careful with that, I think that's a good financial management. Now, you know, the county would say, well, we've got 40 million, we'll bail you out and that, well, really? Because they have other obligations too, and they're predicting their bonded, their bond rating and things like that. So I, I don't know. I think we have to have some, but how much is, you know, Chris would have to be the final arbiter on what we would have to have. I, I will tell you this, board policy speaks to, is it 5% Chris, in fund reserves? Yeah, so, I mean, and we've never been close to approaching that in terms of good financial management, but.
And I would, I would add in response to Mrs. Williams' question, is, for me, my perspective on it would be whether to take, whether I would support taking the $500,000 from fund balance, or wanting to carve $500,000 out of our operating budget to fund it, really to me depends on whether this is a one-time issue, or whether this is going to be ongoing. If this is a, sorry, Board of Education, we can't help you this year on your systemic projects, if you can cover us this year, we'll put your funding in the budget for the next seven years. That's one thing. That, that tells me it's a one-time thing that we're going to have to do. But if the county doesn't wish to participate as a partner in systemic projects for the ongoing future, then I don't look at that as a one-time expense. Then I look at it as an ongoing liability that we need to budget for. So that's, that's how I look at it.
Fisher, any other questions? I think Dr. Wilcox has a few things he wants to add.
We'll move on to that then.
Um, just a quick update to the board on where we are with the academic hub, and a good segue into that, Mrs. Williams, by the way. So, thank you. As you all know, we received the unsolicited proposal from the Bowman Development Group. It was for a building of about 52,000 square feet. It would have provided us 12 classroom spaces, traditional classroom spaces, two science labs, a cafeteria, room for some expansion. And the, the ballpark cost of that is about $15.5 million, plus the ground lease, which is about $2 million. I've spent some time talking to the city about participating, got very positive comments from the city, although we've not asked them specifically that, because one of the things that we had to do, and I was clear with them, is we had to get permission from the state to proceed. We now have that permission. I shared that letter with you yesterday. It seems to me that there is a little confusion by some in the county about what this facility will do and how it will be used. One of the things that we've talked about is it creates a, kind of a reprieve against building a comprehensive high school, so it gives us high school capacity. We think it will serve some specialized or small learning environments. As you all know, we have begun the process and have students in 701 Frederick. There we have police and fire cadets. We will be adding in the fall a new flavor of Homeland Security, which is different and unique from the program that's currently at South High. We have talked about moving some other programs downtown, anything from digital and graphic design to cybersecurity into a storefront, where the kids then would use the academic hub for their academic courses. We've talked about some other programs going down there, but we don't, as I've said recently to one of your colleagues, it's a bit of a chicken and egg. Until you have the space, you can't really design the program to go down, until you have the program, you're kind of caught in limbo as to how much, how the space will be used. But we're getting closer and closer on those things. We do know this, that many of the careers that our kids are pursuing, there would be opportunities for them to have internships if they were downtown, whether it be at businesses like High Rock, or in the culinary arts, whether it be 28 South or someplace like that. You know, there are restaurant opportunities, The Plum, and I'm sure there are other catering enterprises downtown that could use some student interns. That said, we also know that the University of Maryland system at Hagerstown is continuing to expand their enrollment, and they're also coming up with new uses for their classroom spaces. I met last week with the USMH Advisory Board, of which I'm a member, and Mark, who is the chief operating officer for the facility, said that over the summer, they were going to be converting another classroom to a nursing suite, which me, and this would be infant care. So it takes up a whole classroom space, where they'll have infant beds, they'll have all of the equipment that you'd use to teach nursing students how to care for kids, and neonatal care units. So, again, while we'll have the space next year, the pressure keeps mounting for us to have our own space downtown. And as I mentioned earlier, the creation of the capacity downtown perhaps drives off the cost for the comprehensive high school downtown. The board resolution that you provided on April 21st directed me to secure approval from the state superintendent. We, we now have that approval. We have the approval from the public school construction program. I have not yet gone to meet with the county commissioners, but I thought that that process would look something like this, that at our joint meeting, I would spend some time talking to them about the concept, and also then work with Mr. Murray to have a formal opportunity to address the county commissioners in an open, public session, where we would make this specific ask. And when you ask about, "Well, what would the ask be?", the ask would simply be this, that we would take some of the money that has been earmarked within our fund balance, we would combine that with a contribution from the city of Hagerstown. We would ask the county commissioners to realign about $4 million in currently budgeted CIP dollars. And I have had some conversations with Mr. Murray about where those dollars might come from. And then we would ask them to consider financing an additional $6 million in bonded indebtedness in what would ultimately look a bit like a revenue bond, meaning that we would take operating dollars to pay that $6 million down. That $6 million at about 3% would cost us a little over $400,000 on an annual basis. I do have some folks from some local, the local financial community looking at that number, so I'll have a much more precise number prior to the ask. We are looking at the ground lease. Again, remember, the ground lease really is just a vehicle to ownership, it is not a traditional lease. So at the end of the period, whatever that negotiated term, whether it's 20 years, 15 years, 10 years, we would own the ground. But the price for that ground, over 20 years, would be $2 million. And again, I think there is some interest in perhaps one of the partners paying the ground lease, but we'll see whether that all plays out. The last couple of things that I wanted to share with you is, you know, so that you would take a look at what we've done downtown. And if you look to this, we have the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, where we have 150 seats with about 300 students, we have 292 students if everyone shows up next year. Again, we have that lease payment on that facility of about $622,000. The Public Service Academy, we now have 107 seats there. Again, that was money that was purchased and renovated using school board dollars. We have the Center for Educational Services, which we have paid for. We have some classroom and, and internship programs that are going on here. Not only do we have some of those kinds of things happening, but we also have opportunities on this campus for some of our special needs students to come out here and do some light work in this building, everything from custodial duties to grounds work. So, this building is becoming, over time, a building where you'll see students more and more. If you really want to take a kind of a, a look at this across kind of historic lines, and you look at this academic hub, and I may ask Boyd to kind of weigh in on some of this, if you take a look at the funding mechanism we designed, the board would be responsible for about 70% of this construction, and that includes the repayment of the $6 million, it includes the contribution from our fund balance. This county would be asked to fund about 23% of this through their participation with CIP dollars, and then the city is being asked for about 8% of it. What this does is it creates an additional 319 seats downtown, or a total number of seats that we would have downtown since 2009, of almost 600 seats downtown. So, I, I think it's, if you really start to talk about the investment, the county is getting 600 seats for really slightly, right around $4 million. I, I think there's just no way they can say, "That's not a good deal for them financially." And I think our community then would say to the county commissioners, "You were incredibly prudent, and you were conservative in a very positive light. It wasn't just saying no, it was saying yes," and saying yes to something positive. So, we're working on the financial case, we'll make it, I think, a little more clearly, but I wanted you to have some idea of where we were today, because you saw that this was referenced in the overall plan and mentioned by Dr. Michael earlier.
Okay. Questions for Dr. Wilcox on the hub? Any questions on the general topic of the EFMP, Education Facility Master Plan? Because this will come up for vote probably on June 2nd, and this does drive the next two documents, our CIP document and our capital maintenance project document. So, if we have direction to give, this is the time to give it at this moment, because once that's in place, it is a living document, we look at it every year, but that would drive our decisions going forward for at least this year.
Right.
Yes.
I just have one more comment. I too noticed, right, not too, I did notice what Dr. Wilcox said about the, how to put it, there, there weren't projects planned 15 years out, like in some years past, when you went to chapter, what is it, five? Where it lists the projects, it used to be that there were, or in years past, there were projects going out over a decade or so. And I, when I flipped to that section, I noticed, too, there's only six or seven. I like this approach. I, I know there's probably some shortcomings in terms of long-term and strategic planning, but I also think that when members of the public would see that section, they would say, "Oh, this school's being renovated in 2021." When I first ran, 2008, there were people saying, "Boonesboro High School scheduled to be renovated in." And I think it sort of creates a misimpression in the minds of people who might read it and not understand that it is a fluid document. So, I just want to say, I, I think it was a good idea to use the structure that you did. These are projects that I think are realistic, and that we have a pretty good idea or where we're headed in the next number of years, so.
And I'd like to just close, unless Dr. Wilcox, you wanted to make a closing comment.
Well, the only thing that I want to say is that I think all of you know the expertise that Rob and Chad and Mark bring to the table. Not only are they really well thought of across the state, but across the region. But Dr. Michael also really has brought some clarity and some sanity to a project that was a little Wild, Wild West. There were, I think, in, boy, what, about seven or eight years ago, when we would go down to the state, we weren't held with the highest of esteem. But quite honestly, if you saw the tone of the letter that you got yesterday, I think it speaks to the fact that these guys are viewed not only as really solid education leaders, but pioneers in the management and the acquisition of facilities. So, I just, I don't want to let this meeting go without passing out my accolades and my thanks to all of you for the.
Thank you. And just to add briefly, and to brag on you a little bit more, I understand that the Board of Public Works, earlier this year, I think maybe one of the first meetings that the new Governor Hogan attended, the, of course, the Board of Public Works, that includes Treasurer Cop, Comptroller Francho, and the Governor, there was quite a lot of discussion about the counties who excelled in maintaining the infrastructure in their schools, and they protected the investment that the state had made all of these years. And Washington County was one of the very few counties.
One of two.
Recognized out of the whole state for protecting the state investment. So, again, Mr. Gessford, your concern about what do we do with our aging schools, and that is a question we need to work and, and struggle with. I do think we're doing a great job maintaining what we have and protecting the safety and security of our students, so thank you again.
The schools are in capable hands, if we have the resources. We need the resources.
I agree. All right. No other questions? Whoops. Mr. Oh, yes. Do we have a joint meeting planned with the commissioners prior to that vote on June 2nd? I know that there had been one.
I believe it's a little bit flipped, or, or it's right at the end of the day. The commissioners no longer meet in the mornings, they only meet from 1 o'clock on, is our understanding. And the meeting that we had set up for today, in this mid-part of the day, was to be here, and it was shifted downtown, and there was no way we could get all of us and staff downtown and back here in the middle of the day. So that's why we shifted, and June 2nd at 4 o'clock is where we landed with the commissioners. So it's not in the order you're suggesting?
Thinking of.
Thinking of?
Yes.
But it will be certainly within an hour or two of the conversation?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, thanks to staff, and we are adjourned till the closed meeting, I believe at 3 o'clock.